I'd like to call this meeting the Cholo City Council to order, show that all council members are present. We have Councilman Clark on the phone. Welcome back, everybody. Seems like we've been off for a while, but welcome back. Thank you all for attending tonight, those viewing channels 58 or any other means of communication. Tonight, I've asked Councilman Hatch to give the invocation and Councilwoman Wilson to give the pledge, if you'd like to stand and join us.
Our kind and gracious heavenly father, as we assemble this evening as Cholo City Council and members of the city government and public, we ask that we conduct our business continuing to be in tune with the financial goals and objectives of improving our services to this community. We ask that your blessings will fall on our citizens and their families as we attend those in the midst that are suffering with the COVID. Bless and comfort those who have lost family and friends to the pandemic. We ask a special blessing on those who serve in our military and ask that their families will enjoy their company as they come back home. Please watch over our law enforcement, our first responder personnel, and all those doctors and nurses and medical professionals who have sacrificed so much for us. We're grateful for this beautiful place in which we live, and we pray that you will send more moisture that we so greatly need. We humbly pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and the visible will deliver to justice for all.
Thank you both. I appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is called to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city council may do so at this time. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the city council as a whole and not to any individual member. Issues raised shall be limited to those within the jurisdiction of the city council. At the conclusion of the call, the public individual city council members may respond to criticism, ask a staff member to look into the matter, or put on a future agenda. We do have one tonight. Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwomen, men, pardon my decorum. I just got off of work. I'm the proprietor of Copapele Flying Services, and it seems today is a day about airports. I'm retired or disabled, actually. Went in the army as a helicopter mechanic, spent time with the 82nd Airborne Division and retired. I call it Fort Cartoon, Fort Carson, Colorado. I was retired medically because of a ground accident. I tripped over the first sergeant's foot and jarred up my neck. So I've worked hard to be able to get back to where I'm flying. I'm back in Arizona. I started flying in Arizona in 1977. My father was a professor at Eastern Arizona College. What I'm trying to get at today, and I'm not trying to waste your time, is yesterday I had the privilege of being able to discuss with some of your civil employees an operating agreement at the airport. Right now, and because of the fact that one of the things that drew me down here was not only to help take care of my father six years ago in Phoenix with Alzheimer's, but I landed a job with the FAA. I'm disappointed because some of the public servants and I, we were not able to come to an agreement because they are not flexible. One of the things that I have, and I would like to be able to get a discourse, and the only way I seem to be able to get a discourse is if I'm going to be able to have you folks as judges. Because right now, for example, the way your operating agreement is, I already have a lease. I'm leasing it from O'No Investments. I'm the only private hangar over on the commercial side, but to go over into the general aviation side, I can't work over there because no commercial ops. There's things with your SOP or your standard operating procedure that is difficult for people when they first come here to be able to set up a business. And right now, your airport has not had a licensed airframe and power plant mechanic and inspector for at least six years. Because when I hired on with the FAA, one of the very first things that I saw was a gentleman that he'll remain nameless, he's still here, go down in flames. They took not everything, all of his license and whatnot, on a judgment error. And so I know that there's not been an AMP IA up here for at least five years. And then what I'm trying to say is, you should nurture and have your mechanics grow. I'm having difficulties as a mechanic setting up my shop here as a flying service to be able to get going because of the operating agreement. In that agreement, there's nothing that allows me to be able to say, hey, when was the last time you guys swept the ramp? There's nothing that allows me to be able to hold the airport people accountable. And one of the other arguments is the fact that they're permitted people and how they went out. We had an airplane accident a while back, and they called me or my company to come and pick it up. We moved it, but before we got there, the employees had picked it up and had broken the main gear and some damage, further damage to the guy's airplane that had landed on an emergency. I'm not trying to say that your people are wrong. I want to work with the people. In fact, what I'd really like to see come to this airport, not only a restaurant, because right now, the only place that you can go fly, if you're a flight student from out of Phoenix, and there are a lot of them, and you do an instrument approach, the only place to do an instrument approach that has a restaurant is Winslow. So why don't we have a restaurant? There are various things that there are things that we can do to help and get a flight instruction. But right now, I'm being penalized as a mechanic because I'm setting up a base and I'm working out of a hangar, which most maintenance likes to be happening. But I was at the airport just this evening, and I see a certified flight instructor giving flight instruction, ground instruction in the airport facility, and he's not required to pay any kind of a permit fee, operating agreement. Where's his operating agreement? So thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I'd like you to be able to consider talking with, and maybe we get a mediator. I would like to be able to get an operating agreement that works. Thanks again for your help.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Obviously, we can't act on that tonight, but you know, with legal counsel and the airport manager, we have an airport advisory committee. And then I know they brought things like that to us before, especially, we hear about the restaurant all the time. Other things that are happening out there, I think you get with the airport manager, legal advisory, the airport committee, and then let them bring it back to us for some of those ideas. Obviously, we're not, I don't think there's any pilots up here, so we really don't know. You know, we rely on our city manager and our airport advisory committee a lot. So I would think you need to lean on them a little more and work with them and see where it goes from there.
For the operating agreement that I have between.
Anything out there that pertains to the airport, you definitely have to go, we don't know about contracts out there. I mean, that's why we have legal advisory team. So you'd have to go through them. We can't change any of the laws that they're written or any of the policies, so.
Unfortunately, part of the discourse that we had yesterday, and I have it recorded, I put it on my phone, they all knew I was recording it, was the fact that the council or the attorney doesn't want to have any flexibility. I asked them directly, well, what are the FAA regulations that you have to have in here? One of them, for example, is on the city's contract for me or operating agreement, I'm up inside the aircraft, and all of a sudden I have to stop because I have to count how many people are planning and deplaning, and give that to you folks because your airports, people are supposed to record all that? That's in the agreement. Well, to me, in agreement, you know, I was a, you know the difference between the Boy Scouts of America and the United States Army, don't you? Boy Scouts have adult supervision.
What we'll do is, I don't want to cut you off, but three minutes is over, but we'll have staff look into it and get back with you. That's all I can say, because we really can't act on anything.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate your time. That was inappropriate.
Thank you for your service. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All righty. Next item on the agenda is special events, special presentation in recognition of a retired city employee, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here to honor Mel West, who's retiring as our manager of our TV station. And I just put together a little, some facts and figures on Mel. He started here as a part-time employee with the city in September of 96, then transitioned to full-time in June of 97. So he's been with the city for over 24 years. And I remember when I came to the first council meeting I came to in Cholo in 1997, I went to the council meeting and I saw that they were filming it and putting it on TV, and I thought, wow, that's pretty good for a small town to be able to put it on TV. And Mel was back there behind the camera. I don't know if he had anybody helping him then or not. Maybe he was just by himself. But so I was impressed by that. And he was instrumental in growing City4TV and providing the programming for it. In 2002, all of us that were here know that we had the Rodeo Cheddar Sky Fire. And so for those of us that didn't have, were there then, we didn't have social media, you didn't have Facebook to tell you what was going on. And I remember that we turned on City4TV, and that's how we got our information. That's where you knew what was going on, because Mel was there filming the press conferences and the things that were happening in the Rodeo Cheddar Sky Fire. And so that was really helpful, I think, to the community during that time when we had to evacuate and everything. So we just, that was the best way to get the information. It was better than the other channels, better than the TV stations down in the valley that was providing the coverage. So the station was instrumental in providing information on school closures because of snow, other fires in the area. We had the Wallow Fire, San Juan, Cedar Fires, and Mel was involved in all of that. We had the sports that he put on TV, the Fourth of July parades, the graduations. All these were popular programs. The other shows that were very popular were Streetbeat, Compassion Speaks, Pet Allies, Inside City Hall. So we want to thank Mel for all the hard work over the years and the many hours he's spent turning out quality productions, and we wish him well in his retirement. And I had them put together a few numbers for me. First of all, I thought over 24 years, if you take 24 council meetings a year, that's over 576 council meetings that he put on, and maybe more because we had other things that were going on at the time. He was, with his forethought, to promote the city in the modern world, the social media over the last eight years, 2.2 million people viewed stuff on YouTube alone. They've been viewed in Canada, United Kingdom, countries all around the world. Like we said, he's done many unique events and happenings at the city, live coverage of the fires, parades, athletic games, public meetings. So I'd like to give Mel a round of applause for 24 years of service. I know you have something to present, but Mel may want to say it.
You're not going to give a speech?
I don't need a speech.
Mel, thank you on behalf of the city of Cholo, all your dedication. I think Morgan pretty much said everything. I know I've worked for you past few months directly. I know I have over the years, but I know I appreciate, I know the council and the whole community appreciate everything you've done for us from 1997 to 2021. So 24 years, awesome. Mel, we appreciate it. And I don't know if you hunt or fish, or I know you can play a lot of racquetball, I'm sure, but thank you again. Appreciate it, Mel. Here you go. Not yet. Thank you again, Mel. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mel.
Thank you.
All righty. Next item on the agenda is consent calendar. If any council members would like to remove or talk about anything on the consent calendar. If not, we'll, we'll consider motion in consideration of acceptance of the Cholo Library Expansion, consideration of acceptance of the West Owens Roadway, consideration of acceptance of the 2021 rehabilitation. How to blow it up here. Consideration of non-commercial ground lease with DJW Flying Squirrel, consideration of commercial hangar lease, consideration of award purchase of Massey mower tractor, consideration of award for contract for the cemetery expansion, consideration of approval memorandum understanding with Navajo County for Northeastern Arizona 911, consideration of the Second Amendment to the Rural Public Transportation Agreement, consideration of resolution number R 2021-18, Design City of Cholo, consideration of the amendments of the city council, June 15, 2021. All entertaining. Got a motion by Council, Vice Mayor Cacavas, seconded by Councilman Adams.
Yes, I would like to make a comment as well. As you look down this list of the number of projects that are on the consent calendar today, it makes me extremely proud of our staff, the number of different projects that we're involved with. And I've had a couple of comments over the Fourth of July and from individuals that are returning to our community that have worked for the city in the past or have been citizens in Cholo in the past, and how great our community is looking and how progressive we are. I'm just really extremely proud to be part of our staff and what they do on a daily basis to make the city of Cholo look good. Thank you for all your work, and I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Got a motion by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Councilman Adams. All those in favor? All those opposed? Same sign? Thank you. You scared me there. I forgot. All righty. Next item on the agenda in our new business, public hearing application submitted by Shane Jenny Shumway for a number 10 beer and wine bar liquor license on behalf of Hampton Inn Suites for its location at 1501 East Wilford, Cholo, Arizona. This is Hall.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Shane Jenny Shumway, representing Hampton Inn Suites, submitted an application for a new number 10 beer and wine store liquor license for its location at 1501 East Wilford Road. The property has been posted as required by state law, and no public input has been received. The Cholo Police Department conducted a background check on the applicant and found nothing amiss. The Department of Liquor Licenses and Control conducts its own internal investigation and background checks. Based on the investigator's findings and the recommendation of the city council, the State Liquor Board will decide whether to approve or deny the application. And just to note that if the city council chooses to recommend a denial of the application, the motion must state the reasons for the denial.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Appreciate that. At this time, I'll open it up to public hearing. Is anybody that wants to make any comments? Seeing nobody move, I'll close the public hearing, turn it back to the council for consideration of the application. Hang on. Got to close it again. Consideration application submitted by Shane Jenny Shumway for a number 10 beer and wine liquor license on behalf of Hampton Inn Suites located at 1501 East Wilford, Cholo, Arizona. I'll entertain a motion to. I have a motion, second. Second by Councilman Adams. All of those in favor? All those opposed? Same sign? Was that a no or a yes?
It's a yes.
That was a double vote?
A double yes.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Appreciate it. Do you have to read that? Oh, you're on the next. Oh, you're there. Consideration of, next item on the agenda is consideration application submitted by Margaret Heath for special event liquor license for White Mountain Veterans' Tribute at Cholo Regional Airport.
All right. Margaret Heath, representing Walking Down Ranch, submitted an application for a special event liquor license for a White Mountain Veterans Tribute event, which will be held at the Cholo Regional Airport, scheduled for September 3rd, 4th, and 5th. This event is sponsored by Walking Down Ranch and will start at 9:00 a.m. and end by 9:00 p.m. each day. Proceeds from the event will benefit Walking Down Ranch and their mission to serve veterans. The license will allow Walking Down Ranch to sell beer and wine during the event. Alcohol will be sold in the orange area marked A on the map provided with the application, and participants will be allowed to consume the alcohol throughout hangar number one, the center map where vendors are located, and the observation tent to view the planes. Event participants will enter and leave through one entrance, which will be monitored by security at all times. In addition, security will patrol and monitor the areas to ensure that no alcohol is brought in or leaves the premises and that there is no underage consumption. Security will be provided by retired police and military officers. The Cholo Police Department performed a background check on the applicant and found nothing that would preclude approval of this special event liquor license. The application in action taken by the council will be forwarded to the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control. Unlike a regular liquor license, the council's decision is final for such an application.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Any questions or comments? Vice Mayor.
This is a large area out at the airport. I just, not that I'm opposed to it, but I'd like to have further description of the event and maybe this opportunity to promote it a little bit more. Is there somebody here representing?
Doesn't look like she's here tonight.
I have a question as well. Is this all fence? It's not?
There will be, the applicant though did say that there will be barricades up around the section where the alcohol will be allowed. And then, so on, on the application, there was a map, and I know that it is a large area, but in orange, it's outlined, it does show restricted. So the parking lot is off limits, and then it just shows, basically, it's like an open place where the observation tent is, and then like where the vendors will be at, that's where they'll be allowed to consume the alcohol. But there will be, and I believe that that was part of the special event license, they have to install barricades all around the area.
Is there like an airshow? Are they displaying airplanes? Is it?
makeup left as well. I don't know a whole lot of information on this special event.
Mr. Myers, if you have any information you could give us, that would be great.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Maggie will probably hate my guts. We started on working on this event when I first got up here in 2019. I got her out of the habit of calling it an airshow because there's certain FAA requirements. One of the stipulations that I would recommend you folks do is they do comply with the Federal Aviation Regulation that says if you hold a charity event, at least five, and what they're wanting to do is get the EAA chapter. I met my wife at an airshow in the Confederate Air Force when I was flying AH1s, and I proposed to her a year later in the back of the B-25 during an airshow. So I've been a member of the Confederate Air Force for 27 years now, and I've been married 26. I'm familiar with airshows. I've been a performer, and I've also been as a mechanic and, you know, whatever else. I don't think that they're adequately prepared. And Councilwoman Cacavas, is that how you say it?
Cacavas.
Cacavas. Sorry. You brought up a very good point, and I would ask that you have more clarity and a list of names. Because one of the dilemmas that they're having is they're wanting, and I don't mind sharing my hangar, but most big airshows are only two, two days. They're wanting to do it three days. The only big ones that are three days are Oshkosh, which is upcoming, the EAA event, Sun 'n Fun, and then the Reno Air Races. But if you go to airshows that are such as Wings Over Dallas, things like that, and I realize the EAA, they're bringing airplanes, she doesn't want to spend any money to bring up any CAF airplanes or anything like that, the ones that are the performers. And so it's not going to be, three days is going to make it flop. And I'm sorry about that. And then there are going to be active airplanes that are out there, and I just, I don't think they have enough people to be, and they've never, not really ever done this before. So to go three days, I don't agree with that. Is there anything else you wanted to ask questions about?
City manager.
Based on some of the questions being asked, and we don't have the answers, our airport manager's been meeting with Walking Down Ranch, and what we probably ought to do is continue this and invite her to the next meeting where you can make a decision. Because I know Mr. Meyer's been working with her, but I don't think he speaks for her. And it is inside the secure area of the airport.
It is.
Is there any way, since you've heard a couple of comments, I think, let's, can we keep going on a few comments so you could take them back to her?
Right. So and she needs to be here so she can answer these questions.
Right, but maybe give her a heads up. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Councilman Adams.
I just, I just kind of wanted to know how many law enforcements or retired law enforcement for security. I'd like to know those kind of questions. Talking one or two or 15, I'd like.
Yeah, so she did not put that, the exact number on the application, but when I was speaking with her, she said it would be around like up towards 20 or more. So she said that there would be quite a few around in the area, and then they would be posted right by the vendors of selling the alcohol and then in the one entrance and exit area. So it did sound like she had quite a few volunteers who were going to be providing that security. And they also, along in the application, they have a paper that anybody who does want to consume the alcohol has to fill out, and they'll take a copy of their driver's license as well to show that there's no underage consumption.
Well, it sounds like, I think the size of the thing is the whole concern, because then the security, like both of those items. Do we need a motion to table it, or do we just table?
Just, I wouldn't make a motion. You'd need to make a motion to continue it until the August 3rd meeting.
I'll entertain a motion to continue this till the August 3rd meeting. Do you have? Let's go with the motion, and then we'll go for questions after that. Did you make the motion?
No.
I just seconded yours. You were making the motion.
I actually had a question.
Okay. Councilman Hatch made the motion. I need a second. Got a second. Any other comments?
Mine was just, you know, they said this isn't fence. This red line is not fence, and that they have to bring in barriers. But, you know, my concern is, how big are these barriers and what keeps somebody from crossing over the barrier and going out onto the runway?
What we can do, and I haven't been in, I was in an initial meeting, but not any of the latest meetings, but we'll have, ask her to have a prepared map, detailed map showing how this is going to work, and then the council will be able to make a decision on that.
And we can ask questions then, too.
If I may.
Go ahead, real quick.
I just think Walking Down Ranch is a great organization. I support, but I think this is kind of like dogs crap steak. Problem is, that's just a little bit too big. I think one day would probably.
Well, it's her event, so we'll discuss that with her. Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor of continuing this to the next meeting? All those opposed? Same sign? Motion passed. Quit scaring me like that. Jeez. All right. Next item on the agenda is consideration of resolution number R 21-17, establishing streetlight improvement district secondary property tax levy for fiscal year 2022 at 210,000. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. On June 15, 2021, the mayor and council held a public hearing on the fiscal year 22 final budget and the secondary tax levy contained in this action. Property taxes collected within the streetlight improvement district are utilized to pay utility costs of street and park lights within the district. Based on the current assessed valuations, the proposed tax levy of $210,000 will remain unchanged at the rate of 14 or .1401 per $100 of assessed valuation. At this rate, a home within an assessed value of $150,000 will pay approximately $17.86 annually. Staff recommends adopting resolution number R 2021-17, establishing the streetlight improvement district secondary property tax levy for fiscal year 22 at 210,000. Available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any comments or questions?
I would like to say I'm glad we're not raising it. I'm glad that we can see it stay at the same rate as a homeowner.
Yeah, it's been the same. There was a plan put in place, I think around 2012. That brought it up for four years, and then after 2016, it's been the same since 2017. So it's been unchanged for four or five years now.
Councilman Hall, sir.
You just answered my question.
Thank you. Any other comments or motions?
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt resolution number R 2021-17, establishing the streetlight improvement district secondary property tax levy for fiscal year 2022 at 210,000.
Thank you. Got a motion. Need a second? Second by Vice Mayor. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Man, they give me every time. Yes, you, Mr. Clark, Councilman Clark, you're going to get me one of these times. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of ordinance number 2021-03, authorizing purchase of real property known as Navajo County Assessor Parcel Number 210-17-001, 210-17-002, 21014-050D, 21014-049, 21014-050C from Hammerick Properties Incorporated. Mr. Brown. Mayor, I need a stand from this line item, please. All right. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor and Council, the city has plans to build an all-inclusive ADA or Americans with Disabilities Act compliant park, Frontier Park, along with a splash pad. In addition, the council is aware more events are taking place at Frontier Park. Staff recognize that with the loss of some of the property for the park splash pad, that the parking would be important in that area to increase. In addition, a secondary access would be beneficial for emergency responders and to ease congestion in that area when there are events. The owners of the property of the above parcels approached the city to see if the city would be interested in buying a portion or all of the property. to see if the city would be interested in buying a portion or all of the property. Historic structure is located on the property. The owners indicate they were interested in selling all of the property. After the appraisal was completed, staff negotiated a purchase agreement for all of the property. So the address of the property is 780-790 East Deuce Club. The property consists of approximately 5.08 acres and the structure on the property is approximately 2,720 square feet. Purchase price is $555,000 and the city will pay all of the closing costs. This price also includes the purchase of four shares in the Sholo Woodland Irrigation. Some personal items may also be left in the home, which will be included in the cell. This property is located adjacent to the Frontier Park parking lot to the north and has access to the Deuce Club. The agreement allows the city a 30-day inspection period and the close of escrow will be on or about August 21, 2020. City staff recommends approving ordinance number 2021-03 and purchasing the property for expansion of future parking and access to Frontier Park and to preserve the historic structure located on the property. Available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, is there any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Vice Mayor.
Do we need to have her read this by unanimous consent first?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. I'll have that pulled up.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Sholo, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of real property known as AP numbers, 210-17-001, 210-17-022, 210-14-050D, 210-14-049, 210-14-050C from Hammerick Properties Incorporated.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Vice Mayor.
I'm very proud to move to adopt ordinance number 2021-03 and further move to approve the purchase agreement with Hammerick Properties and authorize the mayor to sign all documents necessary for the purchase of the property.
I have a motion. A second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? All those opposed, same sign? Beat me too. Motion passed. Thank you, Councilman Clark, you're going to, oh.
Give you a heart attack, Mayor.
No kidding, well, you're right in front of me, but you're not. Thank you, Mr. Brown, appreciate it. Alrighty, next item on the agenda, summary of current events. Council members? Go ahead, Councilman Adams.
Just a couple of things real quick, I want to thank staff for the Fourth of July, it was wonderful. I think they did a great amazing job. Went to watch the fireworks in the field and it was truly amazing and I appreciate all the hard work that they did and it's exciting days in Sholo and we can keep going in the right direction and keep doing forward. Excited, happy.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
We got a lot of good comments on the card and the story of Sholo, so that was wonderful. But I also want to recognize that our CEO at Summit Healthcare is retiring August 6th and we've been invited to his retirement. He's been the chamber president for a number of years and he's been a leader in our community and without his foresight and leadership and expansion of Summit Healthcare and the board's foresight as well, the city of Sholo wouldn't be where we are. So I invite you to attend that event on August 6th.
And he plays some decent golf, I guess.
Now, a lot of golf.
Councilman Wilson.
Fourth of July, I just want to say, wow, that was just amazing. From down to the officer's security of it, to the floats, to the people, it was just wonderful. But the second thing was, and I don't know if any of you guys know, but I met a young lady by the name of Gabriella Foster, she's 12 years old, she's a Sholo resident and she got discovered by Hollywood, by the producers of The Suite Life of Zack and Cody. And she is going back out now for a second interview in August to maybe star in something there, I don't think it's going to be that show, but they found her on TikTok and they were really impressed with her. She's been out once already and I just thought that was really cool that one of our, you know, children here in Sholo was discovered by Hollywood and I wish her the best of luck. You know, and you can read about her, I think she's on Facebook. And her name was Gabriella Foster.
Thank you, that's awesome.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Councilman also.
Hope everybody had a great Fourth of July, just like everybody else was talking here. You know, last year we didn't have one and this year we had a parade and fireworks. We had a great time walking down the whole parade route. Been a long time since I walked that, so at the end I was pretty tired, a lot of water at the end, so. But something else that happened over the, since we've been gone is a couple of weekends ago, we had over 20 baseball teams up here from different age groups and they are playing all over our baseball fields and softball fields up here on the mountain. And I know it's the first time that they came and they want to do it some more. They had little mix-ups and hatches, you know, we've been praying for rain all this time and for some reason that Friday before the game, the first game, it rained like crazy and the fields were all terrible and so they had to call people out to get the fields all ready. So, you know, there's just little things like that that I think that if we can work together as the city and staff work with the people and make these events better and better and better, it's just going to be better for the city of Sholo. They'd like to have more food vendors and have food out there at these different locations. So something we can look at, I think we had all nine or 10 baseball fields going on this, on that weekend. If anybody went down there by the, down Senior Field last weekend, you would have seen that there was a lot of people standing in line for the mud run. I don't know why, but I guess the mud is supposed to be good for your skin, so. But they had a great time running and jumping in the water and the mud and that was from ages, from little up to, at least a city manager's age, nobody above that. So, and then also Meals and Wheels, Meals and Wheels is going through some changes. We're doing some stuff internally with making it better, but please, if you have anything to do that you would like to help with the Meals and Wheels or Senior Center, please give them a contact and they're always looking for drivers. We're looking at new menus, we're looking at new food, we're looking at all kinds of stuff to make this a really top-notch thing where seniors and everybody can come and enjoy themselves and not only just eat, but also to have games and physical therapy and training and dance and all kinds of different things for the seniors. So please look them up and you can see them on the Facebook, on Facebook pages or you can see them on the city webpage. Thank you.
Thank you. Real quick, I know everybody touched on Fourth of July and Brad, thank you guys for everything you did and the fire department, it was phenomenal. I got to hang out with the fire department this year, so kind of cool to see some of my old buddies again, but you guys did a phenomenal job. Mike Bosley, Derby Down the Deuce, I went to one years ago and I got the opportunity to go to this one. Got to be one of the judges, but it was pretty fun. It's nice to see us getting back to normalcy, it really is, so. Thank these people that are dedicating to put these on, city staff for the Fourth of July Parade. They work really hard to do that. And yes, walking down the parade was a lot of work, handing out the Deuce of Clubs. It's funny, me and Dawn started walking out together with everybody. I said, I don't want to keep up with the flow because I want to socialize. So we, me and Dawn kind of hung out together. Did anybody know the story about the city of Sholo? And they said, no. Somebody say yes, I'd give them a card. Like, well, here's another card anyway. But anyways, a good time. Appreciate everything that everybody did, especially staff, I mean, between PD and the fire department, they did an awesome job. City Manager. Oh, wait, 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 I got one more thing I can't forget. I want to congratulate my wife for winning the ancillary contest at the Wild West State Contest and sending us to the World Food Championship in Dallas in March, so. Pretty exciting and Connie, thank you for that article, it was awesome, appreciate it. And it's raining.
Yeah.
Very hard.
Oh, Councilman Clark, I'm sorry, do you have anything?
No, ma'am, I don't have anything, thank you though.
I figured you'd scare me if you did.
Just a couple of things, the library will have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the completion of the youth center and Makerspace this Friday, it's July 23rd at 10:00 a.m. The expansion project has been in the works for the last couple of years and the project was brought to life through the collaborative efforts of the city of Sholo, RAIN, which is Rural Activations, Rural and Activations and Innovation Network, Sholo Library Friends, Arizona Network and the Arizona State Library. Again, that's 10:00 a.m. at the library this Friday. Recreation staff still accepting registrations through July 31st for the August 14th Try in the Pines and you can contact them at 532-4140. And the city is currently accepting applications until 5:00 p.m. Friday, August 6th. From citizens' interest in serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have one opening on the commission. And then finally, in public works projects, work began this week on the Sholo Lake Road sidewalk project. As most residents will notice, the A.D.O. Mill and Overlay Project on White Mountain Row and Deuce of Clubs continues with work being done on the west, on the west along the north side of the west, of Deuce of Clubs. So it's, they're working on north, on north side Deuce Clubs and they'll move to the south side and come back down. Then they'll work on White Mountain Row. As Councilman Kavas has mentioned, there's many other projects happening in the community and we just appreciate the patience as we make improvements in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. And be careful, those workers, I know they're doing a lot of it at night, but they're still framing during the day. So just be real cautious of them guys, I feel sorry for them and they're so close to the road. Anybody need seconds?
I'd like back in for a moment.
Okay. Look at him, he's already getting antsy, he's ready to go. Go ahead.
That's okay.
Councilman Hatch.
I was away, had a death in the family that, I'm sorry that I wasn't here for some of the activities. The marketplace is going to have a meeting on Thursday to set some more detail on the battle of the bands. We're really excited about that. And as we get more information, I'll get that distributed to everybody. Another thing that happened while I was away, one of the competitors in that bicycle wreck passed away. I was so saddened to hear that. And I don't know if it was mentioned, I'm sure probably it was in the other meetings, but Sholo is a better city than that, to have that kind of a reputation hang over our head. And I hope that people can be forgiving of that and give us another opportunity to show how good we really are. Because of the blatant outburst by one individual, we were sullied. And I'm ashamed of that, but I'll get over that. But I certainly want to express my sorrow to that person's family and to the people that organized that bicycle. Give us another chance to come back. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman Hatch.
Councilman Hatch, appreciate that. Alrighty, any other comments, seconds? Next item on the agenda, scheduling meetings. We don't have any. So if there's no more business before the City Council, I will adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.